Because he is, I mean, he is God incarnate, that's why he was able to do it. When he was on earth, he was functioning fully human. The church may does understand that Elijah was a man of life passion just like you and I. So it is not a, it is not a special, it's not something that are, it's just because it's Jesus. It is because we can do this thing too. Greater works he did, not just greater works, greater things he did too. Greater fasting we can also do. Greater consecration, greater commitment, we can do more. Said David had been through a lot. He had the eye of immediate fame, a recent marriage, dangers from the Philistines, repeated attempts on his life, and a heart-breaking farewell from everyday life to live as a figurative for so long. A lot was facing David at that time. You know, there are times you should like give up. And if you can check, this thing has happened to some of these greatest, great men in the scripture. You can see the life of Elijah, can we check? First Kings chapter nineteen. First Kings chapter nineteen. Please look and read it. Just start from verse one. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, just a bit. And let's check Matthew chapter four. Matthew chapter four, verse one. Anybody can read also. Thank you. Something was, something familiar occurred in these two scriptures that we read. Elijah withdrew into the wilderness. Jesus withdrew into the wilderness. You know, the, the root meaning of wilderness in Greek word means a lonely place. And Jezebel had, in fact, he had, he has scared away Elijah. In fact, he has told Elijah, she has told Elijah everything. If I do not do this to you, if I do not do, just let God do to me. Elijah was afraid. I don't know anything that is bringing fear into your heart. It may even be nothing, that is saying, if I don't drain you, that's saying, if I don't take your life. But the problem is not that that thing is that powerful. It is because you are afraid, because you have not learned to run to God. You have not learned how to go and meet with God in Adullam. You have not learned how to withdraw into a solitary place and say, oh, is this it? Just give me three days and we hear from my God also. Is it this? Just give me this also day and we hear from my God. You are not master the heart of loneliness, withdrawing into a solitary place. And Jesus himself was sent into the wilderness. After thirty years of, you know, he wanted to start ministry, he has been doing great, but yet he still had to go again. There are things that the Lord can only reveal to you in solitary place. There is a grace for corporate assembly, there is a grace that come upon us when we gather together. But there are things that the Lord can only do with you until you withdraw to yourself. There are instructions he wants to give you, there are directions he wants to give you, but you have to learn how to withdraw to him. As Saul was trying to kill David, he initially sought refuge among the Philistines in Gad. Psalm twenty-one, ten to fourteen, realizing however, that this was not a safe place for him. You know, there are many places we have been trying, oh, to, to hide, to seek refuge. At times, some of us who are seeking refuge on, on social media, from some of our friends, I tell you, as far as some of them can help us to, to an extent, the greatest refuge you can ever see is going to God. The greatest safe place you can ever have is going to God. He went to Gad, he went to, he knows that this place is not that safe for me. The church says, the art of man is desperately wicked, who can know it? So because, but you can be so sure of the art of God. Even if the only thing you know about him is what you have read about him in the scripture, and you know that the Lord is true and faithful, it is enough. He sought for refuge where he could, but he saw that, no, this thing was just getting worse. David left Gad and escaped the cave of Adullam. This was David's place of refuge. He could not go to his house, he could not go to the palace, he could not go to the temple, he could not go to the ungodly. He could go to a humble cave and find a refuge, a prince. Regardless of your achievements, regardless of the eye, the Lord has helped you to reach in life, you must learn how to continually humble yourself to go back. You must learn how to always withdraw to go back. Because that is actually where you are coming from. Regardless of where you get to, you must learn how to come back. If you want a structure of sustenance, you must learn. If you want a structure that will continually come for you, if you want, if you don't want to just end the journey where you are, you must learn how to withdraw regardless. I know some of us, because we are, we are not reached certain heights, we may begin to be like, ah, I cannot do this, I cannot. So when God help you to an extent, you may not see the need to be going, you may not even see the need to come for this prayer retreat. He says, so they will not, they will just load me in that room, I'll be sleeping with some, I mean, I'll be sleeping, I'll be, I'll be sleeping with ten people in a room, you didn't know how much I have in my account, I will just go and load. See, the Lord must help you. Regardless of the stage you find yourself, you must not forget where you are coming from, cave. It's not supposed to be comfortable, it's not supposed to be convenient. You no longer attend meetings because, you know, I am going this, I am now this, I am now that. But you have not forgotten. If not for the strength and the might of God, you will not even reach there at first. And David was a, was a prince. And yet he learned how to humble, because he knows that when the real life situation come, even the king may not be able to help him. Because there are territorial power that is bigger than what the king will handle. The only thing that can make him stand at that point is the strength he has gathered in the place of Adullam. Jesus went into the wilderness, I mean, he was God incarnate, what could he not do? But he was led into the wilderness. God, yes, the cave, David stayed was a physical location. But God is our refuge and fortress, Psalm ninety-one, verse one and two. God wanted to be David's refuge in his discouraging time. It was a physical location though. And you know, if you have been to Arro or Abi Guta before, that I have been to Ulmarok, did they show you cave? If you have seen the cave in Ulmarok before, can you signify? You have seen the cave in Ulmarok before, please let's show up hands now. Let's show up, if you have seen the cave in Ulmarok, can we raise up? We are just going to Arro, you are not doing excursion, praise the Lord. Next time he goes, so they will show you the cave, do you know the way you enter the cave? You have to bend, and when you even enter, you cannot even stand. It's so, it's not even comfortable at all. Imagine where a man ran to. A cave is a place of protection, see, there are things the Lord has put in you that you have to find a way to go and hide first. Although certain theology, or some theologians have been giving us a true approval of what happened to Jesus between the age of twelve to thirty, we just saw that Jesus, we did not even see him for eighteen years. Gee, I mean, what was he running for? Who was he afraid of? But there are man, there, there are things in you that will not come into manifestation if you don't hide. And why they had came in the olden days because of war, you know, they used to, there was a lot of war then. And if you have not learned how to, regardless of how powerful you are, there are times that you will be injured. In fact, there are times that death may likely occur, but you have to hide, withdraw, re-strategize, and go again. Withdraw, re-strategize, and go again. Withdraw, re-strategize, and go again. Cave is not meant, you are not supposed to have a comfortable experience. You are not supposed to have a sweet, a pleasant experience. Supposed to be a state of intense preparation, intense, you know, regression, intense waiting on God. And you are staying, I mean, like you said, it's not a physical location now. You can make anywhere your Adullam here. You don't have to say, let me have to, let me just go, but just make sure that you are lonely with God and you are truthful, you are genuine. You don't have to go to Ulmarok before you go into Adullam, praise the Lord. But what was so special about this Adullam, about this cave, that when you run into it or the Adullam, that you are finding a lot of things. What is it about it? What is it? What is that special? What, what, what is it capable of being to a man that can present, that can, you know, make that man from, that can steady man from a state of weakness to a state of strength? What is it? What is it that can preserve the content of a man? Why would a man have to run from a cave, from a city to a cave? From a palace to a wilderness? From a city to a cave, from a jungle, from a city to a jungle? Adullam is the place God wants us to be. This may be our current location, Adullam is not a place of comfort, as it may be challenging. It is a place of pressing and crushing for him to make the best out of us. The core is sites where raw materials are transformed into magnificent finished products. See, I know that there are a lot of things that the Lord has showed you. There are a lot of potentials in you. There is something that you know that, you even know that this is what the Lord has given me to bless my word with. But I tell you to not automatically come to pass. You have to go into a place to sharpen the gift, to bring out the potential in you. To subdue any voice that may want to speak against the rising, that may want to speak against the potential. Apple support, you not just get saved and was just running. The church is saying, he stayed for certain days, he waited on God. I remember that Jude, I used to make this statement, when he first became a pastor for thirteen years, he said he did not visit his hometown. For good thirteen years, he said, there were a lot of wicked people. And you know that because he had become a pastor that time, does not mean we will just be automatically going up and down. But there was a time, whenever I wanted to come, they will announce in advance. In fact, they know you have to announce, when they hear the sound of helicopter, they know the only person that can bring helicopters to that village is him. There is still a time that you will go, you will go without anyone stopping you, but for now you have to hide. There is a lot in you, there are places you are still going, but for now you have to withdraw. For now, you have to learn how to withdraw, refrain yourself to God, be in a lonely place with God. Adullam is a temporary place of refuge, but the shadow of the Most High is our permanent place of refuge. That's why we have Adullam. Marked by a season of intense training, intense preparation, intense waiting on God. That you fall back to when you sense a season of weakness, willingness, and even when you send that there is something that you want to, you are not getting right, I have to withdraw myself to this. David knew that only little, David knew only little about the magnitude of those potentials, dreams, visions he was carrying. Those treasure and talent in him, and he knew the potentials in us. He knew the importance of waiting on God for nurturing. There are potentials in us, deposits that needs nurturing, that needs incubation, that needs safety, and the safety is found in God's presence. The safety is found in God's presence. Let's open our Bible to the God of Psalm ninety-one, verse one and two. Psalm ninety-one, verse one and two. Anyone there can read for us? He that dwelt in the secret place of the Most High. We abide under the shadow of the Almighty. I will say of the Lord, it's my refuge and my fortress, my God, in whom I trust. Who exactly are you trusting with your life? Who exactly are you trusting with your situations, with happiness around you? I'm not saying we will not discuss your situations, but who exactly did you put your innermost trusting? That you are so sure, that as far as I am with my God, I will not be disgraced, I will not be disappointed, I will not fail, I will not be less than, because the person I am trusting is one that can do everything. Everything, my God, in whom I trust. Why would a man have to run from a city to a cave? What exactly does this cave signify? First Corinthians, cave of Adullam means God's presence. Can we agree together, cave of Adullam means? Cave of Adullam means Psalm one thirty-nine, verse seven. Anyone there? Whether shall I go from thy spirit, or where shall I feed from thy presence? David described what the presence is and does in Psalm one thirty-nine, from verse one to twelve, we can read. Just saying his right hand, in his presence, the fullness of joy, you know, there is a level of joy that only his presence can give you. There is a level of satisfaction that only his, there is a level of assurance that only his presence can give you. And at times you are going, you are tired, you are, you are distressed, but you need just an assurance. And it's even like some people are talking to you, but he's not actually eating. I tell you, you have to secure your word from God. Just get the word. You will just see that the strength is unexplainable renewed. The hope, the assurance, the joy is just unexplainable renewed. And when men are even asking you, even we not know how to explain, we know that there is something that this presence is giving me. And that's why most time when we are shying away from subject, this subject matter, we are just doing more harm to ourselves. When we are not paying attention to certain scriptural principles, we are doing more harm to ourselves. And the implication is that we not have to live the, to, to, to live the full experience of the scripture, of the life that we have received. Cave of Adullam is a place of breeding, molding, equipping, and nurturing. Breeding, molding, equipping, and nurturing. Adullam is a place where made and made and built. It's a place of training and preparation. Ah, if you have ever heard the story of any soldier's experience before, you just have to go and ask them. You know, when they take them into that they are training, you will not even see phone with them, you, you will not even hear anything from them. And by the time you are privileged to hear words they are passing through in that they are training ground, the way they are disciplining them, the way they are training them, no, you cannot come out to be a weak man. You cannot come out to be a timid man. You cannot come out to be, you know, ah, no, you cannot come out to be afraid of anyone. Thank you, ma'am. You will come out becoming a mighty man, intense training. You don't know how to shoot before, don't worry, just come. The qualification or the criteria to join is not that you must know how to shoot. You don't know how to set a target, don't worry, just come, it's not part of the qualification. Because we are sure that we cannot use three months, six months with us, and you not be firing in any way, any angle. We cannot use three months and six months, and we tell you to go to Sambiza, you will be afraid. You cannot use three or six months with us, and we tell you to go to a school. You are hearing a report from students, ah, that's why we have been having the dream, we have been having this, they are manifesting, and you will be afraid to go. In fact, that is when, you know, you cannot call soldier for battle and they are saying, I am afraid. That is their specialty, they are trained for it. Adullam is a place of intense preparation also, intense training, molding, nurturing. There is a potential in you that it is only in Adullam that you can sharpen the edge. There is a potential, there are giftings in you, that it is only in Adullam that you can make the giftings become a voice that can begin to bless men. Cave of Adullam is where weak men become strong men. First, first Samuel twenty-three was talking about how the weak men had become mighty man of, mighty men of David. Let's move fast because of our time. Cave of Adullam means a place of hiding to David. A place of hiding. There are times you just have to shut down. There are times you just have to intentionally withdraw. There are times you have to keep your life happiness away, hide. Like I said, they said, the art of man is desperately wicked, place of hiding. Do you know David, although he had been anointed, does not mean he will automatically become king. Even with his anointing, he had to hide. Some of us, they have told us that we are this to the nation, we are this in nursing. I tell you again, it will not automatically come to pass. And in fact, it is detrimental for us to have access to those informations at times, because he may want to bring something like a complacency in our hearts. So because you have had that, they say, I will become the next NMCN chairman, praise the Lord. And you are, or the next this. It may not automatically happen, that David was not dead does not mean we automatically become a king. He had to withdraw. Jesus was eating, or hence will have been destroyed by herod. Even Elijah ran away to withdraw. Cave of Adullam is a place of incubation, making, equipping, training, molding. Isaiah forty, twenty-nine to thirty-one. David knew he had stayed with his relatives, stay in the sight of Saul, maybe he will have been killed by Saul, and those treasures, potential deposits in which just have been a waste, and there was no way we will have been able to fulfill the prophets written about him. Cave of Adullam means a secret place to David, secret place to David. He that dwelt in the secret place of Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. Cave of Adullam is a place of renewing strength and power. It's a place of renewing strength, because like I said, it is usual that you begin to notice that the strength is failing you. And that is why we are not left alone, there is a path to renew the strength even more. Renewal of strength and power. Cave of Adullam is a place of journeying with God. When you journey with God, you begin to see into the future, when you journey with God, you begin to see possibilities. When you journey with God, fear begin to go, because it is taking you to certain journey as far as your destiny, your life is concerned. Some of us, we just have to learn that, to help myself, to make this thing, to ensure that this thing come into fulfillment, we must journey with God, and I must learn how to withdraw into Adullam. I used to tell some student, the time you have after the exam, does not automatically mean that it is time to just go and relax. You know, our nursing school structure is, most times the curriculum, the schedule is so tight. Exam time, you can say, out of this one week I am having, for good three days, no one is seeing me. For good three days, I am not testing anything. If I die, let me die. There are things I have to settle as far as my future is concerned, I want to journey with God. I want to enter into some, they have been saying this, if I would die, why observing these things? Let me die. You will be shocked that you not die, later you will come out full of strength. The time you have for break, I know, does not mean you should just, I mean, in fact, those times that we have, at times are the times that devil will come to leverage on. Because you know that this time we are hiding away. But leverage on it. Cave of Adullam is a place of retreating. Know what it means to retreat? You have been going into the battlefield, you have been going around doing this academically, spiritually, service even in God's house. But there are times you have to fall back to retreat. It is a term used in military, when they come them to retreat means, you know, some of them that maybe they send to the battleground like Sambiza, they will call them back for retreats, to re-strategize, to, you know, restructure, to train them more, to grind them more. The place of retreating. And there will always be certain experience that is peculiar also to us for our retreating, for us to come into Adullam. There are times that we may not necessarily have the same experience. Your own form of retreating, your own form of making may be like that of nurses. He was not even privileged to live with his parents, but that place that he was living was a form of making for him. Maybe like Esther, there are situations that call for her, for, for, for the potential in her to be released. It may be like Daniel, that you find yourself in Babylon. It does not mean you have to become a Babylonian, but it means that you know that this is my own journey and I will make sure that what the Lord is said to do with this journey that is peculiar to me, he will do it. He will do it, praise the living Jesus, praise the living Jesus. This is the time for, I will call some of us to make a contribution. When we say cave of Adullam, a nurse in the cave of Adullam? Or cave of Adullam in relation to nursing? What do you understand by that? Cave of Adullam in relation maybe to our training, in nursing school, in your place of work? What, dear, please, I need a protocol to pass a mic, second mic. Place of Adullam, cave of Adullam, in relation to nursing profession, maybe training, maybe in form of study, maybe in form of your work? What do you understand by that? Who is passing the microphone? Thank you, ma'am. You just come to this center. Do you get the question? Please give to anyone as a spirit lead man. Thank you. Thank you, my sister, can we celebrate her? Let's clap for her. Please don't start. Cave of Adullam in relation to nursing. Is she not talking? Should I come and pass the mic myself? Because I don't want to leave the camera. Please, can we celebrate, my sister? Thank you.
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
Okay, so the nurse in the cave of Adullam. Okay, so the way the Holy Spirit ministered to me about it is that, actually, many of us here, God, we could have, you know, gone to different institutions of study, for some of us in school of nursing, we wished we got admission to study, maybe for someone like me. I wasn't planning to do nursing and all, I wanted, I aimed for something, I have something different entirely. But then I can say vividly that, my journey so far in school of nursing is, is just like a cave of Adullam for me. It is a place where God has called me to, and indeed, it is, it has been a place of molding, a place of building, a place of, the same way he dealt with David, yes, it has kind of, yes, been like, been like that for me. And yes, a, a nurse in the cave of Adullam is just simply means that, that present place that we are, maybe your school of study, or the place where you are working, there is a call of God. We are not just there by mistake, we are not, you don't, you, we don't, we, we do not find ourselves there accidentally or just by chance. No, there is a reason why God has called us there, there is a reason why you are not in another field. There is a reason why David didn't go back to the cities, he could have gone to the palace, he could have gone to another place or another big city where he could have sought for protection. But God called him to that cave, to build him, for him to learn, for him to stay in God's presence. And so even as nurses in the cave of Adullam, God has called us to that particular institution, God has called us to that particular place of work to build us. There is something God asks for us in that place, there is a molding, there is a building, there is a working in us that he wants to, there is a working that he wants to bring in us, so that by the time we will come out of that field, whether in school for three years, or by the time you have worked in that place for certain number of years, you come there and indeed, like David and his men, will not remain weak again, will not be the same men that entered that place, will be mighty men, just like it was recorded of David and his men.
Can we celebrate, my sister? It can be better, let's clap for her, it can be better. Thank you so much. But I don't have to add to the statement again, God bless you. Who has any other contribution to that, or any contribution? Let's show up our hands. Okay, please, can we clap for him?
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
As we were ministering, it was just done on me that Cave of Adullam, as a nurse, is a place whereby the Lord trained us not to care for the body alone, but to care for the spirit, soul and body of a man.
Can we appreciate my brother? There are graces in the house. Can we celebrate God? Brother me, you want to, please, let's celebrate brother me, you want to add something? Any other contribution, question? All right. Okay, one more person at the back. I already know the answer. Okay. Thank you so much. The nursing institution you are, even the workplace you are, can be a form of Adullam to you. See what happened to Daniel. The, one of the first thing that I got when I entered into nursing school was the fact that after my three years in this school, like Daniel and three wise men, what will it be said of me? If they bring me before the king, we like this town, and you know that we are going to the nations. But the Lord has to bring you to Lautec first, before he projects you. He has, he may have to take you to Shaki, praise the Lord. Or he may have to take you to Kishi. Oh, why did I find myself in Idiwakiti? I came from Lagos and you are telling me Idiwakiti. Praise the living Jesus. But there is a journey that is peculiar to you. There is a place you must be. There is a system that you must go into because of the peculiarity of your calling. He said, and I will not defy myself with the portion of the king's table. Don't worry, the king is training some people. I know a man, a God, that is training me, that after my three years, so just bring all of us. Let's see. Bring us, let's see. So don't think the only thing you are in school to get is heroin. It's too small. Only your license cannot give you the edge you need. Your license plus God. You cannot be a success in the world by just passing in school alone. You may have a first class and yet you may still be struggling. But you have to carry something with your license, something that the world will not be able to resist. That you carry it to an extent that you dare not go for any interview and they will not get back to you. It's not possible. There is something that you have added with your license. The Lord is helping us in Jesus' name. Attribute to possess in the cave of Adullam. Number one, endurance. You know, some of us, we may go with, sorry, posture we need to assume in Cave of Adullam. Posture we need to assume in Cave of Adullam. Number one, having an expectant heart. Don't go without having an expectation. You cannot just say, I am, you know, there are times that truly you are tired, bossy. If the expectation may even be strength. So that we not walk like, thank God we are nurses, there is a way we do our nursing care plan. Smart, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and time bound. Although the time bound, we may separate it first, because at times it is in the will of the Father to bring certain things to pass in it. Like the way God makes something beautiful in his what? Earlier this month, can we celebrate Jesus? But we have to be specific, measurable, achievable, that God, I am going into the, I want to know what exactly you have to do with me when I'm leaving this school. I want to know. I want to have the glimpse. One of the things I will always thank God for, after my crucifying, I just went, the first time I think I would do something, three days. I was just confused, trying to get a lot of direction and thank God for some of his instructions. It's not that God cannot speak, we have not learned to prime our hearts to receive his word. There is no way, God will actually say something. And even when he's not saying something, he's still saying something. So because there is no way, you are not saying I'm going without, no, you have to prime your heart to know what God asked and what God is said to do with you. Number two, possessing eyes that see and hear that hear. I'm apologizing, we have to spend, I guess, five minutes, I'm sorry. Eye that see and ear that hear. Scripture says in Proverbs, chapter twenty-two, it says, seeing eye and hearing eye, I have made them all. He has made this for you. In fact, you are more of a spirit being than your natural being, than your physical man. Because what God created first, said, let us make man in our honey milk. He created, he said male and female, he created them. And yet, you are not even seeing them physically at that point. That is to say, you are more of a spirit being. That's to say that your hearing is more, it should be more sensitive than your physical ear. He's speaking, he's ready to speak. Can we just declare to her, I have a seeing eye and I have a hearing ear? My sensitivity is sharpened in the name of Jesus. The Lord will speak to us in the name of Jesus. Number three, total trust and dependence on God. You are going to God, you are sure that the Lord is said to do what I'm here for. You are trusting him that he is capable of doing it, you depend on him totally. You are so sure that the Lord will not let you down. Psalm one twenty-one, proverb thirty-five A, proverb sixty-three. Number four, submissiveness and loyalty. Submissiveness and loyalty. And we understand submission and loyalty, we can gauge your level of submission to God, your level of loyalty to God, by checking how loyal and how submissive you are to those in charge of you. Scouts workers, if everybody here in this meeting, we have a level of leadership or authority, regardless of the position we are here. Whether branch school, or you are even just a worker, or you are TS, or you are student school. You think the central schools, they don't have people that are assigned there. But you are not, some of you, you want to, you will not come for a meeting, you will not even feel any means to want to take permission, you will not see any need. From, I'm talking to all category of people now. From, I mean, you are in the prayer department in your school, you did not go for your prayer unit meeting. And yet, no form of, you are not sober, you just did it casually. We can gauge your submission to God through that. It's not just that I know if it is God, I know how to do, do it to the one he has placed over you first. Submission and loyalty. Obey God. But please, learn how to obey those he has put upon you. You can use them to even know how more to submit to God. How to be more transparent with things. Ah, oh God, please disappear. You can, you can add that relationship with God too. Oh God, I'm sorry, I slept over yesterday, I did not pray. You can tell God, God, this, but I will make up today, I'm so sorry, sir. There is a way, it is not supposed to be that hard. It's not that you have not learnt how to be submissive, how to be loyal. The Lord is helping us in Jesus' name. Attribute to possess in the cave of Adullam. Number one, endurance. That's why I said, remove the time band, as I was speaking about smart the other time. There are times you may give God a deadline in your heart yourself, it may not come. But the thing is, ensure that until it comes, you are not leaving. Until the glory come upon you, you are not going back, until you see your answer. You are not, the time to leave is not because I have set it today, it's because I have seen what I'm here for. And if I'm not saying I can retreat and go again, I can retreat and go again. Until, Scripture says, pray until your joy is full. You are not just praying to fulfill your righteousness, pray until you see the results. Number two, patience. Remember, waiting is not wasting, you have to be patient, be patient, be calm, relax. The Lord knows what he's doing with you. David, imagine they have told him, I have anointed you a king. Some of you will have gone, you will have been doing poster, flyer, upcoming king. The king is coming. The king is, oh, done. The Lord that announced, you know what he wants to do with you. The king is coming, but wait, because if you don't, before you know it, the king may be going. And God will not be stranded. God can never be stranded. God will not be stranded. Next thing is obedience. He has given you certain instruction as far as your becoming is concerned. But there are principles, there are things you must obey for you to come into it. You must be obedient to your consecration. Daniel will not just be there influential in Babylon. He was obedient, he was true to his consecration. Say, I will not defy myself with the portion of King's table. There are certain things that it is just peculiar to you. It is not that this food is not good, it's not that this thing is not good, but to you and I, it is not good. It's not that the portion on the King's table is not good. Some of you, the way you used to abuse Tino Bu, it calls you for presidential meeting tomorrow. You will go, praise the Lord. Or you are, you will post it on, say, Tino Bu dinner with President, Tino Bu, praise the living Jesus. But Daniel said, no, I refuse, because I know the level of my consecration. If I'm eating with them, I have joined him. I know, I am standing through. He said, come from among them. Next thing, build capacity in word, prayer, discern his voice. You have to build capacity. Each time, I was saying it in the middle of the night that, do you think two hours, three hours, you can do it? Build capacity. And there's a mindset I used to have, that it can be more. I love that mindset. Anything I am doing, the mentality is, it can be more. It is until you begin to press for more that you know that the more can actually, you can actually do them too. It is possible. But most of us, in fact, we've just believed that, it is not even possible to do this. Most of us will believe that it's not possible to do this. I mean, if you have think, if you have thought in your heart that it is impossible, definitely, it's not going to be possible. Seeing greatness and possibilities, see as far as you can see. Oh, don't doubt God. If the Lord has taught you, you become this, see it. See, you don't have to, I mean, see it, believe it in your heart. You, you don't have to look like it before you believe it. Then maybe the Lord is telling you that you become the next this, and you don't even have the qualification yet. Believe. In the kingdom, believing is seen. When you believe in your heart, everything begin to align. Be faithful, be truthful to God. You cannot hide from God. He knows your heart. Just tell him everything you are feeling. And see, you may not have the Adullam experience, the rich Adullam experience, if, truly, if you are not officially recognized with God. To be officially recognized with God is not just about coming for prayer retreats. It's not, it's not. The Scripture did not made us understand, the Romans ten, that once you come for prayer retreats, you are saved. No. In fact, it's not becoming a next school. No, it's not by being committed to his work. So because you cannot go to his presence, the presence of someone that you know, I mean, you don't have the ticket, you don't have the gate pass. It's like you are saying that you want to go and enter Asolok, Asolok is too far. You are saying you want to go and enter the governor's office. It's not possible. The first thing they will check is the tag, the governorship tag. In fact, anybody that is entering the house of the governor or president, the security have the list and the time they ought to come. So by the time you are stopping at the gate, they, they are just confirming your name, even after your tag. They have seen the time you ought to come and your name and who you are. So it's not just that, eh, because I am following, just follow those people, you will stay at the gates. And the people you will see, it's not people that can hear, they will not hear, it is just non-command. And much more, God, you cannot just enter casually to him. There is a way. So because it may not be unusual that there are somewhere that you know that I want to have this rich Adullam experience, I want to come into it too. People have been saying this, but truly, I want to feel what it means. There is still grace. One thing that made me realize that there is grace, even the fact, despite all the atrocity that David committed with Bathsheba, the wife of Uriah. Do you know it was still that son that succeeded David? What manner of mercy? The son that came by virtue of two sins. In fact, we can call it greater sin, if we can use a word like that. Sin of murder and sin of fornication. Is it fornication, adultery, sorry? But yet, it was the, the seed of that sin, of that heart, that brought about the wisest and the richest king. It was not just, do you know there are many kings in the Bible, I don't know his name? If we begin to do this, I will ask, I can even mention five kings that maybe you have not heard of them before. But this one, in the next five hundred years, you will never forget that king, Solomon. What manner of mercy? What manner of goodness? It does not matter where you think you have gone, you can come into the experience. And the Lord is said to do a much more with us in this meeting. If the first day can be like that, you know what will happen in the second session, third session, fourth session? If you don't want to miss out of the experience, you can retreat, your step back to God. Many run away from Adullam, they leave, okay, man, before God's appointed time. To everything, there is a season and a time to every purpose, under the heaven, there is a time to be trained. A time for us to manifest. You are seeing certain manifestations, you are designing it. No, don't just decide, go and train yourself. There is an aroma that you also produce, that men, that men we love, that men we covet. But just go and train yourself. You are not that bad, you are not, it's not that you, you have not given yourself to training. No, things are not, you are not confused, but you have not learnt to withdraw into Adullam. There is direction. For those trials and nurse to become fully formed, there is a place of making. Cave of Adullam was like a place of making for David. It was recorded in second Psalm two, that David later became king of Judah. Don't rush out of the making process. Don't be in hurry to leave the presence of God. The presence of God is a place of learning, unlearning and relearning. There will always be a time we need to retreat, don't rush out to emerge. Or you become a bum, rather than being the blessing God has decided to be. There is something that the Lord has in mind when he was creating you. He said, I have known you before I formed you. You know, or it's until when you go into the cave, that you begin, you, this thing begin to unveil, one after the other. You don't have to compete, you don't have to do this, you don't have to say, I want, there is something the Lord has put in you that your generation is waiting for. Is there any question? Can we celebrate Jesus? Can we bow down our heads? I waste my life again, I, I, on you. And I will wait in the cave. And I will still see you do what you are said to do with me. There is profit in. On you. Can we bow down our heads? I waste my life. Can we bow down our heads? And you know, you are here, you want to. You know what it means to have this experience? And you want to be officially recognized as God. And you know that you want to be officially recognized with him. And this is another chance. What a good thing, to waste your life to bank on him. You know you are ready to make things right with God again. It is another chance for you to, the mercy will speak. You can just signify wherever you are, that you know that I don't want to come to this retreat, going back where the same have come. That what the Lord is doing with mine, I don't want to be left out. And you can just signify by raising your hands. Simple prayer of faith will generate its mercy for you and will set you back on track. Yes, you don't have to be ashamed of it. You don't have to be shy about it. There is profit in living your life for God. Yes, you have to do it shamelessly. You have no to, you don't have to be afraid, you don't have to consider anyone. Yes, it can be more. Yes, you can still join the train. That you know, I want to have a youth on in my work with him. You can still join the train. It is never too over. It is never too late. Oh, it is never finished for you. I don't want to know the lie the devil may have been telling you. I am telling you that the Lord is bringing you to his presence again. I want to tell you that the mercy is ready to bring you back on track. Oh, yes. Listen, as you raise up your hands, can you just be on your feet? Let the evangelism department just reach out to you. Just be on your feet, let them reach out to you, to pray with you, to begin to join with you. Yeah, there is grace made available. Oh, we are not to waste the time, there, there is limited time and we have a lot to do. There is grace made available. This cannot be your hand. There is a potential. There is something the Lord has put in you, that the Lord wants to unleash through you. Oh, this cannot be your home. No, this cannot be your finish line. You are just starting. And the air nursing has brought you, because he is sending you to nations. because he is sending you to nations. And you must not let the devil take hold of your life. Ah, no. I am ready to live shamelessly for you, Lord. Because there is profit in living for you. Ah, no. You have come under the shadow of his grace. You have touched his grace. You have come under the shadow of his mercy this morning. And you will be sure what the Lord will begin to do with you from now on. In case you want to join the train, there is this time. Ensure that you do not just come for prayer retreat and you are going back the same. Masco, Pranilea, you can cry to God. Show me mercy. Show me mercy. And even if you are here and you know that you still need the renewal of mercy, you can speak to God. There is more the Lord can do with you in Adullam. Only if you can submit to him. Jesus, help us. Jesus, help us. Help us, Lord. Help us, Lord. Amen. We can begin to pray, those of us that are praying just silently. We can begin to talk to God. And those of us that have stood up, that have responded to this oracle. A simple prayer of faith is ready to serve you. Show me those who understand, if you acknowledge, you believe and confess your sin, that is all. Acknowledge and a sinner, believe in the resurrection, the dead and the birth of Christ and confess. And wherever you are, you can just say, "Lord Jesus, help my heart today." I acknowledge that I used to be a sinner. But from now, I'm ready to live my life for you. I am ready to live my life for you. I believe that you came because of me. You suffered for my sake and you died for my sake and you resurrected again. Lord, I declare that the power of error and of sin is broken over my life. Assist me to your kingdom. Give me the grace to follow this path of life. It may be narrow, but I know that your grace is sufficient for me. So help me, God. Thank you, Jesus. Amen. So please fill the form you are giving and revert back to the mission department. Can we celebrate Jesus? Can we celebrate Jesus? Can we celebrate Jesus? Can we celebrate Jesus?